Please enter your conference ID and press pound to finish. Transferring you to the conference now.
Yeah, I'm gonna start the work session on the on the budget and on what we want to do with regard to revenue neutral rate as well as the budget discussion items that have been identified by our finance director, Matt Wolf. Good evening, just evening. Matt?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Nice work sessions on the 2021-2022 revised budget. It all starts with this wheel that which illustrates the process for the best practice of priority-based budgeting. Priority-based budgeting is a multi-year results-based planning process for achieving identified goals prioritized by the governing body. Provides a framework and aligns resources, money and staff to deliver what the community values most. Nice presentation. We've broken down into these components. All go over budget highlights, or another way of looking at it, what does this budget delivering? The general fund, economic development fund, our utility funds, budget considerations, and then staff's recommendation. Under the council's top priority, promote economic development. We have infrastructure to support new development, Prairie Trace, Waverly Plaza, Plaza South, and Hilltop Ridge. The last three projects are all supported by benefit districts, which means the cost of those improvements and the debt services associated with them are going to be paid by the property owners. We also have planning for future infrastructure capacity, including a preliminary design for the water transmission line and a design for the new intake structure at Hillsdale Lake. Under infrastructure and asset management, we have inflow infiltration program, waterline replacement program, pavement management program, a new program of the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund, and then Main Street reconstruction from Sycamore to Old Highway 56, Waverly Road reconstruction from 175th to Madison, and 167th Street from Center to Moonlight. Under quality of life, we have Quail Meadows Trail, Quail Meadows Park, Center Street sidewalk improvements, which would be the first project associated with our downtown plan. Under fiscal stewardship, I wanted to point out, we controlled health insurance costs this plan year with a 0% increase. If you remember, we switched away from NPR, we hired CBiz as our broker, and we switched to Humana and we seen the cost savings. Also, staff is working on updating our rate studies and also updating our parks master plan. We have several new position requests: a senior staff engineer, senior maintenance worker, a maintenance worker, all in public works, two police officers, municipal court clerk from part-time to full-time, and a staff accountant. Through our process improvement efforts, we've identified these areas where we can build capacity, enhance performance and delivery of service, create stability and expand capabilities of public services in the police department and municipal court, and add more capacity to financial management to oversee all the new special districts and economic development programs, including CIDs, TIFs, special benefit districts, and RPEs and annexation rebates. As the city grows, it's not just the volume, it's also we're adding complexity. Other personnel changes include a building inspector to plans examiner, prosecutor to lead prosecutor, outsourced public defenders to part-time public defenders, budget neutral change. And then if you remember, during the 2022 conditional budget that you've approved, there was a 3% merit pool for, or $286,000. Future cost of hiring and retention is still an issue. Wage increases are increasing on a national level, and more substantial salary adjustments might be needed in the future to stay competitive in this market. The Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund would be funded by transfers from other funds. This is kind of showing you what those placeholders would look like throughout the budget. We've currently excluded the electric utility and police department. Police department has their own replacement schedule for patrol vehicles, and the utility has a lot of large vehicles that are on leases. We're requesting that the 2021 and 2022 revised budget include placeholders for these programs. We won't spend any funds until we come back with a detailed program for you to review. And then what this approach also does is eliminate wild swings in cost to replace vehicles and unpredictable maintenance costs and create a more stable and predictable annual expenditure. In June, we received the latest estimate from the county of a 7% increase in our valuation. Under the flat levy mill scenario, or also known as the baseline scenario, that increase caught our property taxes on this average single-family home by about $3.26 a month. Would also generate about 342,000 initial property tax for the city. Please note that there is pending tax appeals, and that could lower the 2021 estimated assessed value. So under the baseline scenario, we'd end 2021 at 38%, 22 at 33%, and 2025 at 30%. We've created some new scenarios based on council's direction. One of them is a half-mill reduction, which at the end of the five years would lower the fund balance down to 27%, approximately 123,500 less revenue for the city, but it would generate property saving, or property tax savings about $1.17 per month for the average single-family homeowner compared to the base scenario. Another scenario is a one-mill reduction. This would basically lower the fund balance to 25% at the end of the five-year forecast and create about $2.35 a month in property tax savings for the average single-family homeowner. Then on the revenue neutral rate scenario, we would end at about 24% of fund balance. This would generate about $3.26 a month in average savings for the single-family homeowner, and it would be 342,000 less than the base scenario. Essentially, it'd be flat with the taxes we collected last year. Here's a quick comparison of the mill rate scenarios, and just a reminder that the mills roughly about $247,000 now, and we do have two tax levy funds that this is, our mill levies divided between. About 71% goes to general fund, about 29% goes to bond and interest. I also want to give an update on development fund. Just a reminder, this is funded purely by transient guest tax. That's also known as bed tax or hotel tax. We have an adequate fund balance of about 162,000 at the end of 2022, projected fund balance of 209,000 at the end of 2025. Just for comparison to annual expenditures, we're budgeting roughly about $200,000 a year in 2021 and 2022. Echo Deb Council, which was kind of created by Charter Ordinance 18 for giving recommendations on how to utilize these funds, recommended putting up budget placeholder of 45,000 in for marketing and promotion. Historically, we usually budgeted about 25,000. During the pandemic, when we thought our bed tax would basically almost disappear on us, we cut that funding. It's being requested that's put back in at 45,000. Then the council also recommended taking a look at our small business assistance program to make it more flexible and providing support for local businesses. In the electric fund, we had a polar vortex event earlier this year, and we keep having costs come in. It's up to about $7 million in operating costs. This will eventually be passed on to customers through the power cost adjustment. We have a very, right now, our fund balance, if you look to date, is probably around 9.5 million. We expect to end 2022 by at around 14.8 million, and then in 2025, it will be about 18.6 million. There are currently no planned rate changes for the electric fund. The water fund, we still have a $500,000 subsidy from the wastewater fund, or from the water fund to the wastewater fund for 2022 through 2024. There's adequate fund balance of 2.2 million projected at the end of 2022, and it goes down to about 1.8 by 2025. There are planned 3.7% rate increases from 2022 through 2029. In the wastewater fund, we have adequate fund balance of 1.7 million in 2022. This actually goes up to 3.9 by 2025. We say adequate in terms of current operations and knowledge that what's increasing that fund balance is that transfer from water, and that was originally, while still projected in there, is we know of a wastewater capacity issue. We're still evaluating the sewer system, coming up with alternatives, and getting better costs. We should have more information, I believe, next August, or next month. At one point, we did have a project modeled in CIP, but right now, it's kind of been undone with the total cost or what exactly we are doing is, and if we actually modeled the early cost estimates, it would simply break the sewer fund. The early cost estimates are 42 million in capital investment and 1.5 million in ongoing O and M. So some considerations to take into account is the wastewater capacity and a future impact to rate payers, future sales tax and use tax. Right now, it's doing fantastic. Last time I checked, it was 18% above your, same time last year as at the end of June. But it likely is inflated due to federal stimulus, and it's inherently volatile source of revenue. We also are experiencing some challenges with community growth and service levels, both from increase in volume and complexity, employee retention, and making sure we have adequate staffing. It is staff's recommendation that we go with the flat mill levy scenario, the planned increase of 3.7% for water rates. No planned increases for electric or wastewater. When we have more information on the wastewater capacity alternatives, we might want to have a more comprehensive look at what our rates, including mill rate, are, as a total cost of government, and see how, if we're increasing sewer rates, how can we mitigate that, the overall impact to homeowners? And then this, one of the goals of this budget was to build strong reserves to maintain our credit rating and put us in a stronger position for dealing with that future wastewater capacity issue. That is the end of my presentation.
Thanks, Matt. This is a open discussion. There are members of the public who wish to speak. We will use our discretion to, you know, to identify and bring those folks up to the front. But we'll start with the council. Any questions for Matt or staff regarding the budget numbers?
Somebody else can go, I've got a bunch.
Okay. You can go ahead and start, Mark.
Okay, so. You asked. Yeah, well, hey. Matt, I don't expect you to have this number off the top of your head, but help me to get there. So let's say the city's budget was $100. What would it be for next year to just do exactly what we're doing today? No increases of anything as far as additional services, just keeping the same quality of what we're doing today. So in other words.
Mayor, point of order, I can't hear anything.
Is there any, are you, did you hear the presentation, Randy? Yeah, did you hear me? Let's go get Randy on the line.
Say that again, Mayor.
Did you, did you hear me just now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you can, you can hear now? All right. I will encourage the members of the council to speak into the microphones just to make sure that it's being picked up.
Okay, so basically where I'm going with this is just inflation, just we, we've been told XYZ is going to increase whatever. What would it cost us? So I'm using $100. Is it $103 in 2022 to do exactly what we do now? No improvements?
There is the, probably the biggest cost driver of the budget is going to be merit. That's a 3% increase that we're planning right there. Generally, when we project out, we project around 4% for personnel. Reason for that, and one of the reasons we have new staff requests right now, is to maintain current service levels isn't always possible with current staffing levels. So as we grow as a city, have more roads, more infrastructure to maintain, more complexity in our financial administration. That's why some of these requests come about.
Okay, so where I was going with this is, right, R and R is a great number. I mean, I love SB 13. I think it's great for transparency. But there's going to be a very small chance that R and R is actually doable with all the growth that we've already experienced in the last two years, right? So we have more roads, we've put them in. We have more everything that we have to maintain, you know, utilities, infrastructure, everything, city services here for, you know, people coming in. So with that, and inflation and pricing changes, I know that just to operate, we are not going to be at R and R. What I'm curious about is what that is above R and R. In other words, I think that would be our R and R. That would be our status quo number that we start at.
So you're talking keeping staff the same level.
I'm just saying as to get a starting baseline, right?
Yeah, but what you're saying, provide the same level of services.
Correct.
We know there's a 3% increase built in for staff for the merit.
Right, so let's say you didn't have a 3% increase, right? You just have, here's what staff is today. We added this many miles of road, and it costs $28, you know, linear foot to maintain. I made that up. Whatever it is, there's going to be a new number that says it costs this to run this city in 2022, and we've done nothing different. Then, so in other words, I think R and R is going to be below that, okay? Then you have a separate discussion as to the priority and the necessity and urgency of all of the requests. And then we can work through those based off what we have in the delta of wherever we decide to sit with the mill rate at the end. In other words, we make those decisions before we figure out the nowhere.
Can I chime in?
Sure.
The, the issue for Matt in coming up with that number is, one, we projected the 3% because that's been the norm for merit pool. Everything else with regard to the inflation for the services we pay for and the things we buy is not known. I mean, we've had inflation 5% or 6% for the last couple of months, so he's just guessing. So, so the best we can do is project what the cost increase based on what the norm is, and that's what he's done over the next five years.
Right, and that's perfectly acceptable. I'm not saying it has to be exact. I'm saying you built in, in your projections, right, a conservative amount of inflation for every year, and you have a conservative estimate for revenue changes, right? So what I'm saying is, instead of talking about R and R and the mill rate as it is now, why don't we figure out what we need to have it be, rather than start here and work our way back, right? It needs to be X to do our job for the city to still get the same services it has now. And then from that number, which I fully believe will be above R and R, so we're saying that we're gonna bring the mills up. Now, whether or not it's above our current mill rate, I don't know. But then, just depending on the appetite of council, you may have a delta there, and then we can pick and choose based off what I would like to see from you and you is the priority of those additional things. So like the VERF, right, and all those positions. I know those are probably listed 1 through 7 as just in order, but maybe those are in urgency as well?
I believe they're a city administrator's priority rankings.
Okay, so those are ranked. Okay.
So let me, let me talk a little bit about how we did this. So let's talk about the VERF score. So the electric and police department had an asset management plan in place since, I think, five, six years ago when I got here. So we did not have that in place for the rest of the city vehicles. So we were managing assets where we would anticipate or wait till we got to failure. So we didn't have anything in the budget to prepare for the cost of doing business. So because of Senate Bill 13 and Kellin's arrival, we thought this would be an opportune time to identify what is the cost of doing business based on what we've done in the past and any anticipated needs going forward. So to have that in the budget now, when you talk about transparency, it's better to have a number based on history and what we think it's going to be going forward in the budget now, instead of waiting and not having a number in there, and then in two years saying, hey, we need $600,000 for vehicles. So that's why we did the, the asset management, the vehicle plan. With regard to positions, it wasn't, we haven't added positions for two or three years. So we looked at positions, and I looked at positions with Matt and with Amy, and the priority was, we actually looked at the, the gaps that we had in our, our project management and in our process. So as everybody up here knows, when we put responsibility on somebody beyond what either they're capable of, what they're actually by job definition responsible for, we miss things. There are mistakes made, time passes, we miss deadlines, cost increases, and we saw in the last year how expensive that can be, more than adding all these positions combined. It can be that expensive. So that's why when we looked at the, the top things on the positions, till you get to police officer, those are operational priorities. We were, we were trying to fill gaps in our operation to make us efficient, so we didn't have those errors and those delays. With the police officers, there was a service gap. We get hit all the time with truck traffic, and we need officers here, and the reality is, is we have a staffing minimum of three people on the streets at any given time. We're getting too big for that low of a minimum, and it used to be two. So if you want us to be able to respond to complaints about trucks, truck traffic, and traffic safety, and call response, and investigation, that's why the police officers are there. So we, we cut this list, or I ultimately cut this list, to what I thought we absolutely needed to run this city like it's supposed to.
Okay.
And, and we are a growing city, and we're going to have demands that we can't anticipate right now, and we have sidewalk needs, we have infrastructure needs, we have sewer needs, and to put us in a position where we attack those from a weak fund balance is, I, I think that's irresponsible and poor planning. Budget is a planning document. So that's how we put that together.
Wonderful. Okay, so let's go back to that list of, list of positions, if we could cycle back to, yeah. Okay, there we go. So I think this is what we have been talking about, and did we want to go through these positions just to, just to identify, I mean, obviously municipal court clerk, obviously we're having more court happening. We have two dates now in the month, and we have more people coming to court, so that makes sense. We've actually had that discussion in previous council meetings. There are the public works positions. We also haven't, we filled all of our openings, correct, Kellin?
That's correct, at this point.
Okay, so we're good from that perspective, and now, and I know we've saved some money. It's not the way you want to save money, but we've saved some money because we had those open positions for a while. But knowing, going forward, we've got a lot of infrastructure projects coming, big, big road projects. I understand, I mean, that's where most of this is going to be focused on, correct, gentlemen?
Yeah, I can take that. So, so the, the maintenance workers primarily go towards maintenance on arterial roads. So most of the roads that have come into the city in the last few years have been arterials. The minimum crew size I need for that is nine, and I have seven. We haven't added any maintenance positions since, I believe, about 2010.
Correct.
So that's the, the main driver for those positions. It also allows the maintenance crews to spread a little bit more thinly across the city and hit more things at once.
Sure.
And then the, the main driver for the senior staff engineer position, we've basically reached kind of saturation point for the staff engineers. In past experience with project management of, of large projects, I don't like to see my staff engineers get past about 10 projects at a time. Our city engineer currently has 14 on his own. So that's taking the predominance of his time away from other factors that the city engineer needs to be doing.
And there's also, there's also potential risk that we're going to have to outsource a lot of this work. I think we have already in a couple of occasions, correct?
We have in some occasions, mostly tied to KDOT projects where it requires oversight at a level that we simply can't attain in the city. But there is opportunity for us to avoid some of that cost in the future with additional project management.
See, that's, that's the way to justify that.
See, that's, that's the way to, to justify that. If we're not going to have to go outside, we'll be able to solve, solve, perform some of this work.
Can I ask a question on that line?
Yes.
Because you said, you talked about savings with being understaffed. How much are we spending? And, I mean, I know a lot of departments are having issues, and I'm going to pick on Chief Belcher, because I know your department is slightly better working on the CAC. How much have we been paying in overtime because we don't have enough staff to, and I'm sure every department has this, but we're paying a lot of overtime to get adequate number of people on the roads? Where would we be saving money by hiring more officers instead of paying overtime for the ones we have?
Uh, that's a great question, and I think the city administrator hit the nail on the head with his explanation of how we are at the police department and how we're operating. You know, it's going to have, we're going to be able to have a focused area of traffic enforcement and taking a lot of burden off of other officers. So we're going to be able to concentrate on those truck routes, we're going to be able to concentrate on those commercial vehicle inspections, we're going to be able to concentrate on those areas where we have speeding vehicles and reports. Those come in every day and they're all over the city. And it's very difficult for us to address those issues if we don't have the appropriate number of staff to do that. And we're trying to get everyone to cover that and do everything else where we actually would have a focus group to be able to accomplish that.
Does this revenue neutral rate include any new subdivisions that have come online?
It doesn't. The revenue neutral rate doesn't take any new growth into account.
Correct. And we've had two new subdivisions come online in the last two years that were not included in the previous calculations? Is that correct?
Well, we, we've had several approved ones, yes, the two approved, but we're also in the process right now of another one that's almost 300 units coming online here in the process, as well as some of the apartment projects that we've been dealing with. So, um, one of the things, I leaned over and told Kellen too, from an engineering perspective, as this development picks up, we are eating up more time of staff engineering review as part of our planning review process. So that is also something that is being placed in one position currently, and I think we could see that being a full-time position at some point here in the future.
Just trying to build some context here. Any other questions for you, uh, on, on this slide? All right, well, please, please, continue.
I'm, I'm good with the explanation that the city administrator gave. I mean, we hired him to run this organization, and these directors have said, I need XYZ. He cut it down and he's provided this. I don't have a problem with presenting. Um, no, I'm good.
And I just want to clarify on this slide here. This is the, not everything that was requested, it is what you consider the bare minimum to get by.
And I agree, and I, I talked to him about some of these as well, and I felt very comfortable with the ask of this.
I mean, understanding, obviously the police officers, that's critical because we now have a larger road network to manage. We have to enforce not only on the streets that, that we've already had in the portfolio, we also have 109 streets now that's on our, on our list, and the truck enforcement over there too. Traffic is becoming, is becoming much, much more of a, of a, of a portion of our responsibilities now. Am I not correcting that, Chief?
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. And, you know, one thing I think that it's important to remember is that, you know, these two positions, which will be focused with, with traffic, they're going to do more than just commercial vehicle inspections and enforcement. They're going to be doing, you know, accident prevention, they're going to be doing DUI enforcement. I mean, they're going to have all aspects of, of traffic, so it's just not going to be one central focus, but they're certainly going to tackle all those issues.
Um, I'm good with this list, and actually, last time I said that I thought the police officers should be paid more money, and that's obviously a discussion for another time, I think, but that seems lower. But, I, I'm good with the list.
You're, you're going to start, start seeing wage pressure in a number of different categories?
Oh, yeah.
Especially if we go from $7 minimum wage to 15. You're going to start, because police officers are right at $20 on the low end to start, you're going to see us having trouble competing. You're already seeing upward rate wage pressure because nobody wants to be a police officer. So that's going to happen.
I get it. I mean, that's one, I mean, our community is safe because of the police department, and if we don't play our police, police enough, that could be an issue, so.
And, and we.
I'm still concerned about that, but I like the list.
And believe me, it was a lot worse before.
Oh, I know.
I mean, we, we, and you know, because you were on the council earlier, and you know what we did in order to try to bridge that gap. Obviously, that gap continues to accelerate, and some of it's because of the fact that now places like here are more attractive now for officers. Maybe they might take an initial salary that's a little lower to come to a place like this, but other municipalities will be able to outbid, and that's what it comes to act to. Organizations like ours, who treat our officers well, are places where people would potentially want to come, so. All right, anything else on this slide? All right, what's, what, what else have you got?
So, let's, let's go to the, the projections slide. Unless anybody wanted to talk about these other things?
Well, I think the Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund, we've needed that for, since I became a councilman. I'm glad to know that it's actually being implemented. It's been long overdue, particularly around public works. We've really needed to get much more in tune with our vehicle needs, and it's good to see that that's being addressed.
Which slide in particular did you want to get?
So, why are we looking out three years? I'm just curious. Why 2025? Why not 2023 and 2024?
It's kind of based around our CIP, which, like, now we have the CIE 20-year look, and we have CIP 5-year look, so we kind of make sure we have funding associated with that 5-year plan.
I was curious if that forecast was CIP.
I will say, when you start going out that far, it gets less accurate.
Sure, absolutely. So, do you have on hand what the projections are for the fund balance for 2023 and 2024?
Not right on hand. Obviously, we have them in our models, but I have them for the utilities, I think, written down, but I don't have them for the general fund.
So, I understand the goal from staff's perspective was to build reserves, and I understand the reason why, and I don't necessarily disagree with it. My point of view is that 2025 is a good number to look at, and I have no problem using it as a comparison, but I would really like to see 2023 and 2024, since we're looking at 22 and 23, to say, okay, the projection is going down, you know, we're falling off a cliff, we do half a mill or a full mill, whatever. But, in 2022, we see that it's 33% on this page, right, for both scenarios. Okay, that's great. What is it in 2023? When does it start falling off and how fast?
It builds as you go farther out. And the reason for that, that's when those kind of assumptions on, like, your inflation factor for expenses and revenues, we generally are conservative with revenues and less conservative, and we expect expenses to go up more than revenue, so that's why it starts building towards the deficit.
So, what I think would be the interesting comparison between these different scenarios would be, since the council has previously said that we want to keep a fund balance around 30%, 28 to 30%, is what we discussed before. So, at which year does each of those scenarios hit that window? So obviously, flat, we're still at 30% in 2025, which means you're above it until then. Half a mill, we're at 27% in 2025. But in 2023, we might still be at 30% or 29%, which, to me, means we have time to adjust, because we can always raise mills in the future. Even doing a two-year budget, even looking at a projection, we don't have to collect the money today. We can always collect it later. There, there's no real benefit to me in having it today.
So, when you do these projections, then, let's say it's a 0.5 mill reduction scenario, how do you project the mill for the next few years then? Is it 0.5 every year?
We used a 3% increase, and we did that based on, if new growth is between, you know, 1 to 2%, and then some kind of inflation factor, we combine those two to be around 3%.
So the flat, under the flat mill levy, revenues increased by about 7%, correct? Because the mills are increasing by 7%.
Yes, the, the CE's valuation increased by 7%. Generally, for the revenues, we'd expect 3% to 4% if we needed enough to cover the general inflation and capture new improvements.
Okay. So if we were to go to a 0.5 mill reduction, just piggybacking off of what, what Mark is talking about, does that still assume that the, the same, uh, uh, budget priorities would be able to be addressed? So are you talking, like, when we're talking about the additional positions, the 3% merit pool, the VERF?
Every scenario has all of those built in.
Okay. So you could take the 0.5 mill reduction, that less revenue for the city will actually be, again, I'm just trying to explain this for the folks that are watching. We would get less revenue for the city relative to the flat rate, but it would still be an increase of about $200,000, $220,000 or $230,000 over what we had last year. So it'd still be a revenue increase to the city, but it would just be at a lower level. We'd still be able to fund the projects and priorities that we've identified through the budget process. We would just have a lower fund balance.
I believe your line of reasoning is correct. Basically, you can look at, I tried to refer to the flat mill levy scenario as a baseline, because that's what these are comparing to.
Yep.
So, another way to look at it is, okay, a half-mill reduction, now I say it's $123,000 less than the flat mill, but if you remember, the flat mill levy scenario was $342,000 extra compared to last year.
Yep. Yeah, to me, if, regardless of which mill scenario you're looking at, we have a, a target goal for the fund balance. And if, it sounds like we're all on board with the expense changes for the budget, right? All the things that were presented by staff.
I think that's, yeah.
Assuming that's the case, then we know what our expenses are, and they're in this scenario. So, really, it's just choosing where do you want your fund balance to be, at which year? And, to me, as long as you're at 30% in 2023, I don't care where it is in 2024 and 25 today, because next year, we could change it. And the year after, we could change it.
Sure, but you know, it's a lot easier to raise, to lower taxes than it is to raise taxes.
Absolutely.
Okay? That's the first thing. The second thing is, that assumes a 0.5 mill reduction, so we would be at, what's it, 20.1 and change, okay? 20.165, all right? And that would be for the entire period, right, the five-year period? And that's where that, that's where those projections come in. And that assumes an increase in property values like we've seen in the past, correct?
Um, I'm projecting 3% increases.
That's, that's conservative. Because we're seeing, on average, 6% to 9% increases in gardener for the last five years.
I didn't want to assume that we'd be able to capture that all.
Oh, no, I, I totally understand that. So, we could potentially even lower mills more if we continue to see our revenue improvements and still be able to meet our fund balance targets, potentially. All right? I understand that our, our finance people are very good at projecting conservatively, so that's, that's actually a good thing. We want that conservative projection.
Right. They're erring on the conservative side, which.
Absolutely.
I applaud that. I'm not faulting anything that's been brought up.
All right. So what, are, are you thinking the half-mill reduction, or are you thinking?
I would like Matt to pull up his spreadsheet and tell me what the fund balance is at the end of 2023 for all four scenarios.
Do we have that?
That'll take a little bit to model.
Can, can I ask a question based, kind of off of what Mark's saying? So, you want to maintain the 30% fund balance to help maintain our credit rating?
True.
So, when people are looking to give us a credit rating, what projection are they looking at? Are they looking at the four and five years out? Are they looking at what we have right now?
They generally look about two to three years out. They also take into account not just what the fund balance percentage is, what's your operating deficit or surplus.
And what's your current, what's your current debt load, too? That's a big part of it. Debt, debt to revenues is very, very important.
Right. If our fund balance is 80% for a certain reason, it, they're still going to, you know, it's going to bring up questions if, you know, we cut it and we're operating at a minus $2 million a year, you know, rate.
Oh, yeah. But if they're, if they're looking at 2025, then we need to be looking at that. If they're looking at 2021 only, then, you know, that adjusts.
We're definitely buying down, or paying down our, our fund balance during this period, in any of those scenarios, actually. Because we're going to have significant expenses in the outlying years coming forward, 2024, 2025. We do have some debt rolling off, but we've done a good job of refinancing that debt. I don't know how the markets are going to be in two or three years. We may not be able to take advantage of that. You've got to take that into consideration, too.
Just so I'm clear, like, when rating analysts look at this, they focus heavily on past performance, like, how did the last year go? And then they look at your budget, and they basically want to know, what's your plan and how well did you achieve your plan when we next talk, basically? So if you're projecting that you're going to have, you know, a budget surplus of $400,000, and also you're still having a deficit of $500,000, they're going to know why, and why didn't you make adjustments, basically?
And that all comes out the ratings call that we have for, you know, every two, two times every year, we have that ratings call with S and P, and they look at that.
The biggest concern in past years is, when we had that huge fund balance, like, 2014 or so, and we were spending that down.
50%.
They're a little bit worried that we still had a pretty large operating deficit when we were getting close to our fund balance minimum.
Yep. So, can I ask then, in your opinion, projecting out at a, at a R and R rate that is, goes down to what, 24%, I think, on your, on your projections, correct?
Mm-hmm.
How much difference on our credit rating and those kind of things? I know it's only one piece of it, but compared to the 30% with the flat mill rate?
That's difficult to answer. They look at a lot of different factors, and, I mean, they're not going to look that far out in our forecast, generally. It's really coming down to council's risk level. Like, what's the amount of risk that you want to take on with your fund balance?
I think it's pretty clear this scenario four is not even in the picture unless there's another council member who would like to dispute that.
Mayor, this is Councilman Gregorsek. I, I don't mean to interrupt, but I can only hear about every third word.
All right.
I can, I can hear everything that Matt says, but while I have the floor, sir.
Yes.
And I apologize for being on family vacation. Well, I don't apologize for my family, I apologize for me not being there. My, I guess my opinion, why I have the floor, is that we reduce the mill by half a percent and increase the pilot by equal amounts, not affecting, um, our credit rating as well as our, as well as our plan. And much of what I heard Councilman Baldwin speak to, I agree 100%.
So, it would not be, well, you're talking about the, the dollar amounts. You're talking about taking an additional $120,000, correct, from the electric?
$123,500 to be exact, yes, sir.
From, from the electric fund in the form of an increased pilot to make up the shortfall, and then you're still able to handle all of the, um, the general fund obligations and be able to keep the same level of, of, of fund balance?
Uh, correct. If you look at the history of, uh, the electric utility fund, and I don't want to get into a long drawn-out conversation, because obviously I'm not there to defend it 100% since I can only hear about every third word. It was, it was built to do just that, and that is to lessen the pain of our constituents, uh, which is $3.26 per month, um, for the mill levy that we're talking about. It was, it was to lessen that pain and to leverage the assets that we have in place to offset that. I, I might be, um, I might be, uh, I guess the best word is to, to say that I might be, you know, in the minority, but I, I do know the history of that, of that electric utility fund.
Okay, so, let me, let me go ahead and ask, uh, Matt a question here. Matt, what would be the amount that we would have to increase the pilot from electric fund to general fund in order to be able to cover a shortfall of $123,000 and change?
It'd be the same. I, I don't know the exact percentage off the top of my head, but I mean, you, you could increase it, you could change the percentage to match whatever you need to do to offset that $123,000.
Okay, so the. Okay. So is it, you know, I know we're at 5% now.
Correct.
I don't know how much that is in terms of dollars.
I would say it's probably around half a percent and a little bit less.
Okay.
Yeah. The math, excuse me, Mayor. The math that I come up with is .75, Matthew. And you can check me, you're the bean counter, but .75 is what I come with that would offset that cost, drive down the exposure to the citizens, our constituents, our rate payers on the tax side, and not increase the electric utility fund, I might add.
Okay. So that's, that's a one-year...
Or increase the electric utility cost. I apologize, Mayor.
No, that's all right. That's all right. So that's a, that's a one-year solution because it would be a one-time hit from the, from the pilot unless you want to maintain that pilot at the new level throughout the entire period?
You're correct, Mayor, and that goes right back to what Councilman Baldwin said, is that we would take a look at that year to year and adjust that higher or low with the idea, and I'm not speaking for Councilman Baldwin, but myself, with the idea that we would leverage the electric utility fund in order to offset said mill increase, for which I'm, I'm well in tune with a half a mill decrease, which would be about $123,500 approximately.
Okay. Let me give Council Vice President a chance to, to respond.
To me, that's Robin Peter to Pay Paul. I detest property taxes more so than any other tax, more so than income taxes. But using the utility as a use tax or the general fund is a short-term solution, in my opinion. Now, we need to, when do we have our next rate study scheduled? Do we have a, a date? It's gotta be coming up in the next year or two.
Yeah, we're, we're...
Well, that's my point, Councilman Baldwin, and I hate to interrupt you, sir, but that's my point, is that it is a short term. You're exactly right, sir. And once we can receive that rate study, we can true it up. But at the end of the day, increasing, excuse me, decreasing the mill rate to our constituents, I think is the name of the game, and leveraging the assets that we have at hand, short-term, albeit to your point, and I agree, would be the opportunity for us to level set in order to move into steady state. And I believe there's other taxing entities that are well-positioned to decrease the mill rate to half a percent, considering, I think we need to consider, what the, what the positive is from logistics part Kansas City for the city of Gardner.
Yes, to finish answering your question, Councilman Baldwin, as Matt alluded to during his presentation, we are waiting for some numbers back on what the new sewage treatment options may cost so that we can look at what the overall impact to the rate payer may be, even if that includes adjusting perhaps the electric or the water rate.
Right. So I think that's, I think utilities, you're, I mean, obviously with wastewater, we're gonna have a huge rate increase with $42 million, if that's what ends up happening. So it would be wonderful to have a electric decrease at the same time, and we obviously are over-collecting on electric. We have been for several years. We've built up our coffers. There's no reason to be collecting as much as we do now. So that should be reduced. But I do not want to set a precedent of stealing from the utility to cover that because then next year we go, well, yeah, it kind of worked out, and it was a one-time deal. Why not another one-time deal? And I'm not trying to make light of what you said, Randy. I'm trying to just say that I think it's a bad precedent. So to me, if we reduce the mill rate from the flat rate and it drops our fund balance, albeit to still an appropriate level that we're all good with, right? If at the end of 2023, it's still at 28%, 29%, 30%, we've done our job. We've lowered mills as much as we could. We didn't change the pilot. We didn't affect utility rates in a negative way, and we have saved as much as we can without affecting our credit rate. And then we can still change it next year and the year after when we have more growth. That's where I'm coming from.
And I tend to agree with Mark. And I think also, if, if we're really, you know, needing to offset that, I mean, we can look and see how things play out, but we have the VRF money set aside as well. I mean, if it looks like we really need to...
Yeah.
Rob something, I mean, that would be, we could lower those numbers.
I guess, I guess that my biggest concern is regarding, when you're looking at the electric fund, and we say it's very, very robust, and it was, it was very robust, and we needed that electric fund because when that cold snap hit and we had $7.5 million come out of that fund over the space of three weeks, if we hadn't had that electric reserve there, our utility could have, could have gone belly up. I mean, there are many counties, many municipalities in the state that are a part of KMEA. That's exactly what happened. They, they had terrible struggles, their city on electric utilities, to be able to continue those as a sustainable entity because of the fact they didn't have fund balance. So yes, I, I understand where you're coming from, Mark, that, you know, we are probably, we are, we're, we're collecting too much. That's the reason why we're building up a fund balance. But man, it came in handy in February, and, and so I think that from that perspective, we need to be cognizant of that and make sure that we're not, you know, buying down or paying down reserves necessarily. And understand, when I first came into the seat as mayor, I was looking at a pilot increase. I thought it would be a good idea. I think that KC, the BPU of KC, K is at 8% if I'm not mistaken, and it makes some sense. But, I'm sorry?
It's more than that.
It's more than that now?
Yeah.
Oh, boy. But then, but that's, but that's the whole point. It, it can creep up, right?
I want to say it's like 12?
12 now? Okay. When I first came into this, when I first came into the seat, it was at 8. So that tells you everything of it, that you know about pilot creep. And you're right, Mark, once you, once you set that precedent, it could continue to increase. And so from my perspective, I think if we're going to, if we're gonna cut this mill by half a mill, we have to come up with general fund adjustments, not necessarily electric fund adjustments to be able to make up the difference, if that's what we want to do and continue to keep our fund balances. That's...
And Matt and I have talked about that scenario quite a bit.
Mm-hmm.
And we can work with a half-mill reduction.
We can work with a half-mill reduction. Okay. If, if it's, if it's...
So...
Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. So I appreciate everybody's input, and we all look at it from a different perspective, although we all represent a portion of the community, if you look at Casey, Mark, Tori, Todd, myself. My perspective is, A, not to set a precedence, but to leverage the assets that we have at our disposable, disposal. Second of all, not to increase the mills, but rather reduce it, considering it's $247,000. Second of all, if you work at a $12 million benchmark and you take 10% of that, that's approximately, approximately a half a mill, and I'm not interested in setting precedent by any means. I don't set precedent, and I'm, I'm mixing the flavors here, ladies and gentlemen. I don't set the precedent when I have to dip into my savings or otherwise, my, my assets in order to bridge gaps. More importantly, it's to get across that gap, and I would rather get across that gap with assets that we have in place at no cost to the citizens, considering 10% of $12 million is $120,000, not setting the precedent, and then reevaluating in the outlying years as soon as next year, for that matter. That's where I stand.
Since we can look at it next year, like you just said, I don't see how touching the pilot gains us anything because we can reduce the mill rate and still be fine with the fund balance. And in fact, what I think would be great is if everybody would say, here's the fund balance I want to see at the end of 2023, or 2024, or both, and then we say, Matt, tell us which mill rate gives us that. Not one, two, and three scenario, but the exact number, right? It doesn't have to be a half or a one. It could be .783. I don't care what the number is, right? But it achieves the goal that we set out that meets the expenses and the fund balance.
Well, we're getting close, we're getting close to time right now. We've got a, we've got a council meeting in five minutes. If we're going back and asking staff to look at this again, then obviously, we're gonna have to have another meeting on this because we've got to turn around our budget and get it, get it ready for a hearing by the next meeting. Am I not correct in that?
No, the, the entire timeline is extended due to Senate Bill 13.
Okay.
Public hearings will be on the first meeting in September, the day after Labor Day.
So we could still have another work session at the meeting?
Correct. Correct.
We are running pretty tight on time on developing budget and giving the public ample time to review it.
I don't think we would need another work session, though. I think if, if I can get input from everybody as to where you want it to be, we give that number to Matt. He runs the scenario until he gets that number, and we're done.
Well, let's take, let's take a look at that, at those, at those projections again, Rand.
I do want to reiterate what Matt said, that it makes it more difficult doing three years when you have a CIP that looks at five years.
Correct.
So if everybody's okay with 27% at five years, then what's the use of looking back in three or four years?
Yeah.
If everybody's comfortable with 27 at five, I'm okay.
Well, 27 to 28, I think, is where we, that's, that's a low, that's a low tolerance. It, it's, it's doable. It's doable.
Right.
And if we need to adjust to get to a higher fund balance, like 28 to 29%, then we can look at how our revenues are looking at that point and looking at how much of our new development has come online. Because I'm telling you right now, we need to capture that new development revenue. I'm sorry. That's the whole reason why we're doing this exercise. And if the R and R is not going to include new development, then why even do it? Why even do new development?
Well, you'll get it in a future...
Well, sir, we want new development.
Of course.
And we'll have to do workarounds with Senate Bill 13, sir. So let's not get ahead of ourselves, although I understand the jest of it. I think you've had Baldwin and several others speak to options, albeit not comfortable for all, but we have options with, within our house, if you will.
Certainly.
I, I'm comfortable with 28%, no pilot increase, and then look at the outlying years.
What year, 28%, Randy? At the end of what budget year?
Go ahead, sir. I'm sure.
At the end of what budget year are you comfortable with 28% in the fund balance?
If my notes are correct, 2023.
Okay.
Wow. Where's everybody else? 2023?
Yeah, Randy, we were talking about five years out at 27%.
Yeah.
With the half-mill decrease.
Well, Jim, I appreciate that clarification. I've only heard about the first three words of every four words, so I apologize. I would concur.
Okay.
I'm good with the half-mill reduction with the 27 in 2025.
Can we get those numbers worked and then sent out to, on a, on a Friday memo, maybe? To...
So the numbers you want to see are the in-between years when we're going down?
But do we need that if we're all comfortable with a 5% mill reduction?
It sounds like I'm now in the minority, so if that's where we go, that's where we go, and it's half a mil. But I would be perfectly fine if, at the end of 2023, you're at 29 or 30%. And if that's .623 mills, I'm good with that. And then next year, we can revisit. That's, I'm saying the fund balance at the end of 2023.
Yeah.
It'd be 29 or 30%.
I understand that. We're working on a biennial budget, though. That's the problem. It's a two-year budget cycle, so we have to do an adjustment on the budget and have to make a mid-course correction on the mills.
We have to vote on it every year, and we have S and P 15 now anyway.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the adjustment shouldn't be, we shouldn't be bothered by that, sir. That's, that's an operational issue.
I don't, oh, correct me if I'm wrong, Finance Director Wolf, but I don't think that's necessarily how the biennial budget process works, is it?
Well, every year, sir.
I'm not sure I'm really clear on what you're trying to accomplish here. Like, if you're, I don't, why would you want to change the mills? Like, if you were trying to target 29% by 2023, we could basically look at our expenditures, and if we need to, we could either delay and wait to see how revenues come in, and then, say we could take some of these positions, wait till mid-year next year, and hire them at that point, knowing what revenues are like.
Again, if we're in five years, if everybody's comfortable with 27%, we can work with that, too.
To answer your question, Matt, my goal is to get us down to the absolute minimum we're comfortable with for the fund balance and then stay there.
Correct.
So once we get there, if that's at the end of 2023, the two-year process, so we approve it, and we're at 33% at the end of 2022, yay us, we make, and then next year, you come back and say, hey, numbers were this, and they were way up or way down, and we have to go through this whole process anyway with SB 13, we can say...
Correct.
Oh, we're gonna raise mills, we're gonna lower mills, we're gonna do nothing. But in 2023, where our projection, instead of being 29 or 30%, is now, oh, it's looking at 31. Okay. We'll just leave it as it is.
Correct.
And then we just stay there. That's my goal. I, I don't, I don't really care if in 10 years, it's gonna fall off a cliff because we're gonna adjust it before then. I get what you did. I have no problem with that. But what I'm saying is, I want to get it to the 28, 29, 30% and just stay there forever.
Well, if that, if that's the case, then I think I, I, from the standpoint of rating agencies, they want to see a, a balance closer to 30% than 27%.
We've heard over the years, 26 to 30%. So, and there's no way to know. Moody's and, and S and P can change their mind at any time, and it seems like it's half a guess.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. I concur with you, Mark Baldwin. This is a moving target, guys. I mean, my, my retirement's a moving target for goodness sakes, and I don't mean to compare my retirement with the city budget, but we have operational flexibility to move this number plus or minus one to one and a half percent.
Any direction on terms of the percentage fund balance, like you talked about, or the mill levy, either direction would work from my perspective, but if I could get that sometime tonight, that'd be very helpful.
Okay, so 20, so you want 2023 as the target, at 28%?
At the end of 2023, you got 28, 29, 30, somewhere in there, whatever everybody else is comfortable with, but that's the window I'm looking at.
Well...
28 would be the low side.
I was comfortable with the .5 mill rate reduction.
Yeah. It sounds like the, the folks on this, on this dais are looking at the .5 mill reduction.
Yes.
I concur.
There you go. That's it then.
I think we got consensus.
Thank you for the direction.
Yeah, let's work up the, the numbers and then...
He just gave them to us.
For, for our, for our own information, from the standpoint of how it's gonna look on those 2023, 2024 years that you were looking for. Okay?